I'd like to introduce to you Larry Miller. He is running for Single Member District Six of City Council. Let's start out with, who is Larry Miller?
How do you sum up 74 years quickly? I'm not sure how to do that.
Tell us your background.
I lived in St. Angelo, first got here in 1968. I was in the service then, and I was coming to Goodfellow for training. My wife had been up here once, but I'd never been to St. Angelo. I drove up from San Antonio. And we got a little mother-in-law's kind of situation off of a property on South David. We had a bedroom, a living room, a kitchenette, and that was it. But it was our first home. We'd only been married in one, so it was all still honeymoon time. But the thing that amazed me about St. Angelo was the welcome wagon lady was at our doorstep the next morning. And then we went downtown to try and get the utility started, and none of the companies down there would take a deposit. And I don't know how it is now, but you know, that was pretty awesome. And I know that if we didn't pay our bills, that there'd be a First Sergeant having a conversation with me about it, but I was still impressed by the fact that they didn't ask for a single deposit. And of course, the general friendliness of the people on the street is impressive, too. We left here in 1969, and we returned. I was selected for instructive duty out of Goodfellow, and we bought our first home during that time period over on Webster. So we'd been in and out of this town five times now on military moves. And we finally bought this home, our forever home, in 1986. And we've been in it ever since with a few couple breaks. I went off on another world tour courtesy of the Air Force. And then we finally really got here and settled down and refused to move anymore about 19, excuse me, 2007, because I didn't, my wife got an assignment to England and I had to go. But I graduated from ASU. The kids graduated from Central. They both graduated from ASU. So you know, we've got our roots deep here in St. Angelo. I initially was in the Air Force working as a Vietnamese linguist. So I had a ringside seat to a lot of things that happened that people will write about in history books if they haven't already. That was when I was enlisted, and I received my commission as an officer in 1980. And continued to stay somewhat connected to the Vietnamese situation. My final tour of duty in the service was with the folks that look for the missing personnel in Southeast Asia. And it was probably, I won't say the most enjoyable, but the most intriguing work I'd ever been involved in. We came back here in 2007 because my sister-in-law, who's totally paralyzed on one side and has been paralyzed since she was three years old, she needed our attention because her mom and dad were gone. And my wife is the oldest of the children in the family, so we took care of Mary for about 10 years. And she's over there now, and do you know where New Haven is? It's just off of, just off of Knickerbocker, around where Brayden House is.
Oh, yes, okay.
And she's over there, and she's been over there for about, let me see, must be two years now. And then COVID hit. So that's, that's one of the tough things that we've had to deal with is seeing her enough and giving her enough attention from family members.
Yeah.
So, but since she's over there, I have a little bit more free time to do some things. As you may know, I was precinct chair for this precinct out here at 421, which is in the Southwest area. And I worked not only my own election, but I worked the general election in November.
Very good, very good.
I'm trying to stay busy.
Good, and out of trouble, I can tell.
Yeah.
Well, what motivated you to choose to run for City Council?
I think it's a number of things and not one single thing. It's like what you're saying. I've watched the city council meetings, and I see a definite disconnect between the city council and the city departments. It's like they're not even on the same wavelength. The city council looks like it's a rubber stamp operation, 70, 70, 70. I don't see questions emerging in the discussions with department folks. It's not a perfect world. I don't expect things to be perfect. When I was in the military, I expected people to bring me the downside of something as well as the good side, because there always is a downside. For instance, economic development in this town. That's great, we're gonna have a rail port here. It's great that we're, you know, perhaps gonna be getting a interstate highway running through here shortly, and that's great for the economy of the town. But there are things that are gonna be impacted, and some of it adversely, in all kinds of manner. Look at the infrastructure problems we have now. If we don't do something about it now, we're ill-prepared for what's gonna happen in the future in terms of economic development. And it may, it may shy people away from coming into town in terms of economic development. But, but think about it. It's not just the roads, it's not just the water system, it's the all. It's fire department, it's police, it's, it's everything that we need to keep an eye on so that we don't get run over by what's gonna come to us in the future.
The following question fits well then. What do you bring to the table that will improve our city council?
I think I bring some energy. I think you can sense that, too. I'm not afraid to ask a question. I'm not afraid to get down in the weeds and, and find out the truth in the matter. And I've been doing a degree of that so far. Do I come to this job all knowledgeable? I'm not a, I'm not a geologist, I'm not a professional in water systems or anything like that, but I'm a pretty fast learner. And if I, if I have questions about something, I wanna find out the answers to it. I listened to a speaker the other day that was talking about our water resources, okay? And the speaker felt pretty confident that we were in good shape. And I tended to agree with him, but I wanted to stick my nose in it a little deeper to find out what the truth was. We have, we have never gone to the Plan B on our use of water. We have always had surface water that was available. We have come close a few times, but we have never gone to Plan, and frankly, the city has a Plan B, a Plan C, and a Plan D. And we need to get off the business of going out there trying to find more water sources when there are adequate resources out there already that we haven't even touched. We're doing studies on it, and we're paying the bills for some of it, but we're not using it. You know, a perfect example is the Ford Ranch. I still think we took a bath on that. I know that the money we receive for, for all the properties just about equals the amount that was paid for. But what's lacking, and what's lacking in the truth is that that note was serviced for a long, long time. We took a bit of a bath just servicing the note and the investment on it that people aren't talking about. It looks pretty good that we recouped the money that we spent to purchase it, but we still had folks that we owed money to that hasn't been recouped. So I think that's, that's what I bring to it. I like to get involved in things. I don't know if, do you see the recent thing we did out of Fairmont Cemetery for, you're familiar with Mark Mathis, right? The Mathis Brothers?
Yes.
Okay. I was out at Fairmont Cemetery about three months ago, and I was visiting Jack Mathis' grave. And he has a beautiful tombstone out there, has the Medal of Honor on it. His father's buried there, and his younger brother Harold's buried there along with his wife. But there was nothing there for Mark Mathis, who also gave his life in the defense of this country. And I thought, that's, that's not right. So we started working, a little organization on it, started working with VA to get a headstone for him, a plaque, something that marks the fact that he lived and breathed in St. Angelo, Texas, and Sterling City, and that we honor his service and sacrifice during the war. The only problem between, the difference between him and Jack, Jack, his aircraft returned to the base, and then he was sent back home. Mark crashed into the North Sea and his body was never recovered.
Sure.
So what we tried to do, and I guess I started it, was we tried to write a 77-year wrong and get him honored in St. Angelo, Texas with a plaque with his name on it. They wrote it up in the Standard Times, first, we got front page.
Cool.
But it was a beautiful ceremony, and we finished it off by placing pennies on the bronze plaque on the ground, and that's a symbol that somebody visited his.
That's right.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's what I bring to it. I bring in some energy. I like to get involved in projects and things around town, and there's quite a few of those, and you know, I don't wanna belabor them.
Yeah, what, okay, what, have you been following city council for a while? And if so, what changes do you feel need to be made?
They need to start asking questions. They need to appear to be knowledgeable about the subject. Now, I've heard that there's a tendency for them to get paperwork dumped on them at the last minute. Here's 82 pages, read it, and you'll vote on it in a few days. That's a crazy system. President Eisenhower had a solution to this problem, because as you can imagine, he was getting hit with things all the time. He felt if you can't sum up what you've got to tell me in one page, then you better start preparing it, because there's no way that those people on that board are so expertise about it that they can absorb 82 pages at the drop of a hat. They need to be, they need to be given material that they can absorb and understand, and then question and act upon, but I don't think that's happening. And the other thing that's happening is, there's just too much warm and fuzzy instead of hard-boiled questions asked. Everything isn't always fine. You need to get into things to find out whether something will work or it won't, and I don't see that happening. I just think it's a rubber stamp operation.
Okay. I'm gonna ask you what your perspective is on several different things around town. Kind of get your fill, okay? So you can give short, brief, or more depth, depending on, you know, what your thoughts are. So what's your perspective on our infrastructure, such as water lines collapsing and so on?
You know, there, you're probably familiar with Chadburn. Below the asphalt on Chadburn, cobblestones. Now, what does that tell you about when the last time anybody went down there and really knew what the problems were with, with the water system in the town? Those pipes have probably been down there since the 1920s. They're almost, if not 100 years old. We've been putting Band-Aids on, costly Band-Aids on a system that is tired, worn out, continually deteriorating. It's not gonna get any better. And you know, I won't fault the current city council entirely, because this has been a can that's been kicked down the road for a long, long time. Unfortunately, some of those folks that could have done something about it are long gone. And that's just the way it is. But it is critical, that first question about economic development, it is critical that we take care of the matter now. And the way to do that is to tighten our belts and get away from pet projects, get away from pork, and do what needs to be done. It's absolutely critical.
All right, what about our city streets?
I was, I almost used this one during your previous one. I was gonna tell the crowd that I was, I thought I'd be late for the get-together, but I finally didn't make it in. My car fell down a pothole on College Hills, and fortunately, I had a tractor-trailer to pull me out of the hole. It's eaten up tires, it's jarring us repeatedly, it's probably putting cars out of alignment. It's embarrassing, the two major arteries, and I know there's more, the two that I'm most acquainted with are College Hills and Southwest. And neither of them have, they are just not even close to up to snuff. I think we seriously need to look at doing some of the things like did it on Bell Street. Instead of throwing down asphalt, we need to put some concrete down there. And they, they do need to raise that area down there by McDonald's to where it doesn't repeatedly and constantly flood in not necessarily the hardest rainstorm's going. Yeah, our, our roads are, I don't know if you noticed it too, but going on Loop 306, I feel the car kind of, it's like a washboard effect, even on 306.
306 is state, not city maintained, so, yeah, so city isn't liable on that one. What about our rising crime and murders that's going on in our community?
I talked to the police about this, that, you know, for those of us who are not into the drug culture, for those of us who have nothing to do with sex trafficking, those of us that have nothing to do with gangs, it's almost invisible. Almost invisible. Yeah, if you're not part of that criminal entity, if you're not into sex trafficking, if you're not into drugs, if you're not into gangs, and it's invisible to you. Police are talking about as many as 15 gangs are present in this town right now. And you know, it's gonna get worse as we grow. I mean, it's not gonna get any better, and that's one of the reasons why we need to look at, at some of the services that the city has, specifically Police Department, Fire Department. I'm concerned about the brain drain on the police department. We're paying approximately $5,000 less for our patrolmen working here than they are in Abilene. And here's, here's what happens. We get them through training, we get them experienced, and then Abilene takes the pick of the litter.
That's right.
And, and that's not to say that any of those policemen don't do an excellent job, but they're in a competitive market, and folks are flying from here to go to other places that pay more. I can't fault that policeman. He has to look out for his life, too, and his family and everything involved with it. I think there's a tendency for the city to consider policemen in the same category as somebody working for the water department or whatever. It's not the same thing. And if anybody deserves to have $5,000 extra in their paycheck, it's those guys.
Here's a current question. Statewide pandemic mandates and local orders from Health Department. What's your perspective on all of that?
Well, I like the comment, follow the science. In the beginning of this whole mess, there was actually people that were suggesting, don't do anything, just herd immunity. We'll all just infect each other and we'll get out of it. Well, that, that was a pretty stupid idea. So when people tell me to follow the science, the science is taking us here, and then we're doing a zigzag over here, and then another zigzag over here. There's some common sense things to do. I think one of the comments, well, obviously, wearing masks, I think, is a good idea. I socially distance myself from, from people. My wife, it's tough to get out of old habits. I think everybody's found that out. How many times have people walked into a Stripes and then saw a guy with a mask on or a woman with a mask on? Get a button hook back to your car and get it. Or you're creeping within that six-foot distance. I think there's some common sense things that people could do, and that, that's the way we've been applying it. We haven't gone overboard, we haven't visited as much as other people, but we've tried to stay away from large crowds and things like that. Got our shots. Got my tetanus and my distemper and my... Isn't it funny, though, that we say, did you get your shots? Usually when people go into the doctor, they get one shot, but when you say, did you get your shots, it sounds like a pet. So it seems as though we're coming out of this now, and that's because a lot of people kind of did the same thing that we did. Wore the mask, in spite of the fact that it fogs up my glasses and I hate it, drives me crazy. And staying, I'm a hugger, and it's very tough to get away from that habit, but in this case, we abstained from it, except with family, you know, you can't avoid grandchildren and all that, so.
Let's go on. How about dog parks and bike trails?
I think they have a place, but, and that one over there on Arroyo is getting, getting a lot of use, I won't argue with that. I think there's a place, too, for wilderness areas, just let them be. Could money have been spent, that was spent on the dog park and the trail over there, press? Well, here we are talking about infrastructure. I certainly would like to see a greater emphasis on that, to the detriment of those kinds of projects. And that's, that's a pity. I wish we had all the money in the world, we don't.
What about downtown beautification?
I think that's brought, brought some economic benefit to the town. Looks a lot better than it did years ago. I think I need to find out more about that, though, because I don't know what is, what is being done to the detriment of other things like the infrastructure. Should money, should money go to the roads and to the water ahead of those kinds of projects? It's a tough balance. You know, you wanna see the downtown area thrive, you wanna see it bring in tourists that are kind of absent right now, but you'd like to see that happen. But what's the downside?
And your perspective on the pandemic economic situation? There was a loss, I'm sure, of sales tax monies and hot tax, hotel occupancy during the pandemic. How does the, you know, what's your perspective on how to recover from that?
Well, one thing that's gonna start almost immediately now is the governor's mandates. We're not gonna have to, if folks don't wanna wear the mask, they wanna have more people in the restaurant, and it's left up to the individual entrepreneurs out there. If somebody still wants to maintain, like Governor Abbott said, if Target wants to have people wearing masks, then it's their call. It gets kind of tough when you have a person come in without a mask and you ask them to leave, there's gonna be some awkward moments there. But I think this is reasonably smart, that we get back to the life of business.
All right, kind of changing the subject a little here. Would you be interested in seeing St. Angelo become a sanctuary city for unborn children?
I thought you were gonna hit me with the Second Amendment. Yes, I went by, I don't even know if this building is open. I was traveling around down that Sherwood Way the other day, and I saw the building where Planned Parenthood is located. It looked like there was nobody there, and I wondered...
We don't have a Planned Parenthood anymore.
This building had Planned Parenthood on it, so that was my question. It still says it on it, so I wondered to myself, 'cause you know, I don't know everything about this town, don't cling to, to be a sanctuary city for, for pro-life.
Now, if you're, oh, Sherwood, while you're talking about the one, that one's pro-life.
Is it?
The one you're talking about. I'm sorry, I was thinking of the one that the building's been taken over by CPA now.
Is that building, is that company, are they still in business there at that place?
Yes, uh-huh, yeah.
There was nobody there, there was no cars or nothing, so I didn't know what...
I think operate on a limited schedule during COVID.
Am I pro-life? Yes, I think it's a horrible thing. I believe that society can be judged very easily by how they treat the weakest element within their society. That includes not only the unborn and young children, but also old people. And I think it's shocking to what, for what history will, will say about us with what goes on right in our midst, almost. That's just a shame.
Yeah. What about becoming a sanctuary city? So was that a yes as a potential of becoming a sanctuary city for unborn? Okay, what about for illegal aliens?
That's a real problem, too, especially with what's happened lately, I believe, in the border wall. If you cannot control the flow of people into your country, you do not have the right to, to suggest that you are a sovereign nation. And I feel very strongly about that. And I agree with President Trump that a border wall like that does a lot to preserve the style of life that we have without the intrusion of illegal aliens in there. I have no problems at all with legal migration of people into our country. That's, that's been our history. Have we had faults in it? Yes, and we correct them in order to build a more perfect, you know?
True.
Yeah, they never, the founding fathers never said we're perfect.
So would that be a no on a sanctuary city for going?
No, I don't believe that. I cannot believe, you know, when I first discovered this concept of sanctuary cities, I, and I went looking to see, wow, who are the sanctuary cities in the United States?
We have several in Texas.
I was shocked that Texas had any. I mean, where's the power of the governor? I mean, you would think...
They ignore him. All right, you mentioned the Second Amendment. How about a sanctuary city for the Second Amendment?
I believe that.
All right.
I think there's too many people out there that don't underst, oh, they, did you see that one bill that's, I don't know if it's true or false? So supposedly it was being introduced by some Texas state Congresswoman from, I think, around the Houston area, but she was suggesting that some changes to the, you know, the castle concept, and that the homeowner has to do everything they can possibly do after this person has invaded their home to prevent any bad things to happen, and you sit, you know...
That was a for-real bill, yes.
How do you know what a person breaking into your house has in mind? Well, she just thought it was all, you know, thieves, robbers, and so on. But there's a litany of other things that that person could be up to. Stealing your child, rape, and being nice to them is not going to deter them. So the, the whole concept of it is crazy. You know, if I was a thief, robber, or whatever, and I was gonna break into a house, I think you could pick a better state than Texas. You know, I, you know, I know my neighbors have guns and things like that, and the very idea that, that people are there to preserve their family, and the same thing goes for schools. How dare we put a sign up saying we're a gun-free zone? I mean, I would rather a teacher go down shooting to protect their children than to become a human shield trying to protect them. That is just absolutely ridiculous. So when I see these schools in the area now saying, hey, we've got people in here who are prepared to defend their children, and don't you think about coming in here and trying to do them harm?
What do you consider the main priorities that need to be addressed by the city council?
Here we are, infrastructure again. We just have to knock off the, the pet projects. I didn't know that we were screaming for a $9 million footbridge. Didn't know that. And I have to explain this one, because otherwise you'll think I'm some terrible person. Ted Kennedy, the only reason that I think he did a good job was on the Americans with Disabilities Act. The Americans with Disabilities Act was a fantastic thing. It changed the lives of millions of people that could now get out in public, associate, travel, do the things they wanna do. My brother and I actually carried up my sister-in-law in a wheelchair up all the steps of the Jefferson Memorial, 'cause there was no elevator in 1976. We have a handicap van out there, and I've been in those positions where somebody's parked in a handicapped slot and they shouldn't be there. I've had people that, it has a sign on the van that says, please don't park within six feet, and, and we watch for those zebra kind of, I've even had people, after we parked there, that parked in it, so I had to back out the van. So I am a firm believer in ADA, and Ted Kennedy, for just that one act deserves a lot of credit. But we're building a sidewalk along Knickerbocker, and the whole, it seems the rationale for it is under ADA. The truth is, though, that we can build sidewalks everywhere. It's a question of should we? And Knickerbocker is not conducive to walking traffic. I've been down there twice now, just to survey what they did, and they complied with all the requirements of ADA. Five foot wide, except if it butts against a curb, then it has to be six foot, and they've done a good job on that. But that's not gonna make any people with disabilities go out there and use it, because that area down there is just flat, not conducive to that kind of operation. You go to Harbor Freight and you buy something there, well, in that one closet, you can get around real good without ever getting near that walkway. But let's say you wanted to go across to the company, the Marine Company over there. There's only a set number of crosswalks, and they're at every, all of the lights and nowhere in between. So it makes it exceedingly difficult for a person that's in a wheelchair to cross the road unless they're fearless and wanna jaywalk in a wheelchair. And then, you know, you get over to the Marine thing, and you wanna go to, I don't know, leisure, leisure place has a spot, way across the road again. And we're talking miles on this thing, that it just doesn't work for people who don't have disabilities, and certainly for those people with disabilities. people with disabilities. You know, it, it seems like what we've decided to do is to allow folks with disabilities to have the right to not use the sidewalk, just like all of our other citizens in this town don't use that sidewalk.
Do you believe there is a way to trim back on the city budget and live within a modest budget without increasing taxes?
We have to. We have to do that. You know, I've just pointed out a few things, few items that, you know, I always get a kick out of Everett Dirksen's quote, spend a billion dollars here, you spend a billion dollars here. And pretty soon you're talking about a lot of money. Well, that, that's kind of the, the attitude currently with the city government is we've, we've got this money, so we have to spend it. And that's crazy. I don't know if you're familiar with the one point two million dollar paving machine that the city purchased? Okay. And then it became the one point two million dollar paperweight. And I'm not even sure if they've sold it off yet, whether it's been junked, what the status is on it. But that was one point two million dollars. It was just totally wasted. And on and on and on. Are there things that we can do to our town to beautify it? And they've done some of those projects, like the, you know, the sheep and the nice-looking welcome to San Angelo thing that they've got on, on Bryant Boulevard. Those things have a place. And, but, but we need to take, to take care of, of the things we have to take care of and they're necessary to be done. I ran into one the other day. It was on city council. Maybe you've watched this one. Lady came up there and was talking about the non-existent permanent bathroom in Martin Luther King Park. Okay. They, they got potter potties out there now. They did have a bathroom there one time. I don't know the history of it. But this lady was looking for approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a restroom in Martin Luther King Park, which is fairly well-used and the pride of the neighborhood. And they talked her to death. They got nowhere with it and they've been arguing over this thing for, as I understand it, for approximately ten years. And those folks have been out there without a proper bathroom to, to do what's necessary to do. That, that's a pity. Could we afford to, to pay for a restroom out there? I think we should.
Do you support freedom of speech, religion, gun rights, our constitution as it's written?
Isn't it a shame? You know, I remember the day where if I had an opinion and it varied from your opinion, we'd have a conversation. Maybe you'd learn a little something from me and I'd probably learn something from you. I might adjust my position on things. But I always thought, you know, along the lines of that one Supreme Court Justice said, you know, you can't shout fire in a crowded theater. I agree. There are some things that you, you can't, can't say and get away with it. But we have to have a, I don't know, a thick skin and absorb what other people have to say, despite the fact that we disagree with what they say. I, I believe in that. Freedom of religion? I don't know how in the world we, we should ever do anything to that unless, you know, the things we're doing are an illegal act. But other than that, and the expression of it, I think folks are, oh, remember, couldn't say Merry Christmas. Remember when we went through that? I mean, goodness gracious. If, if I was in a, a neighborhood with other people and they were celebrating Kwanzaa or Hanukkah, whatever, fine. I'm glad you're happy with your, your expression of your religion. That's fine and marvelous. And isn't that really what diversity is about instead of some of the stuff that we're looking at? It's, I appreciate who you are. Did you hear the one the other day, Bon Appetit magazine? Did you hear this one, Ken? A lady wrote a recipe into the magazine on how to make Jewish cookies. And they put an, an apology on the bottom saying, sorry about this. This lady was not Jewish who wrote the article. I thought my eating habits are an expression of my happiness with the foods of other lands, whether it's spaghetti, whether it's bangers and mash in England, or whether it's enchiladas. I, I thought that my enjoyment of them was an expression of, I don't know, how I felt about that culture to a degree. Not, not a whole bunch, but still there's some. And it just makes no sense, the craziness that's going around with the woke culture that is pointing all of this out to us.
What kind of leadership do you prefer? Do you prefer the type of leadership Trump gave us or the type of leadership that Biden is giving us now?
I think I have to say I'm in the middle. Having been a, a commander and a boss in the military, it, it doesn't always have to be Cuomo-style. It doesn't have to be like that. And it doesn't have to be like what Biden's doing either. I think there's, there's something in the middle that I would head for. I like to encourage people to do their best rather than perhaps threatening them or giving them too much leash.
Okay. How can San Angelo protect itself from the influx of illegals that are flowing over our borders right now and headed our way?
Well, it's crazy that we have some cities that say, well, we can't report the illegal aliens that we've arrested for various crimes. They can't report those people to ICE. That is absolutely insane. There is a law of the land. We call it the Constitution. And there are things that the federal government had expects out of local as well as state government. And one of them is, is assistance of, of tipping them off to people who have no reason to be in our country.
We've covered a lot of topics. What are your closing thoughts? Or is there another area that you would like to talk about? Your closing thoughts?
I just keep thinking on, on what we need to do. It is certainly tightening our belt. We can't get away from it unless everyone is confident we can just continue to kick this can down the road. We're, we're in a pickle because I know that it's very difficult to expand the tax dollars now. But we have to do what's necessary to get done. And, and that's to, to get this water system and to get our roads up to a, a level where we can look forward to a very good economic future. But there are companies that will take one look at us and say, I'm not too sure about this. They're not spending their money wisely. They're allowing this to continue on and on and on. And that infrastructure supports their business. If, if it's a manufacturer that comes in, his, his trucks, his cars are going to use that roadway out there. And it's not up to the task right now and we need to do something about it.
All right. Well, I appreciate your time and all the best in your race.
Thank you very much.
For single member District Six. Is there, if they want more information, is there a website, Facebook?
I actually have a Facebook.
Okay.
It's Larry Miller for San Angelo City Council, District Six.
All right. Very good. All right. Thank you, Matt.